The meeting is now in session. Tara, can you do our, first let's do our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now Tara, can you give a roll call for us? Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Councilmember Ring?
Here.
Councilmember Mays?
Here.
Councilmember Barnhart?
Here.
Councilmember Baki?
Here.
Councilmember Hanselman? All right, as you can see, Councilmember Hanselman is out tonight. I did speak with her and she has an event at the school that conflicts with our meeting. So if you so choose, I would entertain a motion to excuse her.
I'll make the motion to excuse her.
Same.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Mays and seconded by Councilmember Baki?
Ring.
Councilmember Ring, I apologize. Tara, roll call. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Baki?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, guys. All right, we will move on to no communication tonight. Are there anybody here for presentations? But we do have one member in our audience. If they want to double check, do you have anything for us, Tina?
No.
All right, thank you. And we will move right into our department reports. And Travis, I'll start with you on the department reports.
Okay, I don't have anything on fire or police. But let's see, for utilities, I do. So for electric, our guys are still working on tree line clearance for the lines. They're working with the fairgrounds on their camping area that they're relocating. So we've been working with that and we've cut some new builds around town that they're working with. Water is working, they're shorting employees. So currently, we're advertising for that position. They are working on replacing some of the older large diameter meters. And we've been trying to chase a leak, small leak down in front of country in there. Streets, we are, they're working on ditching. Backwater and flowers when it's hot raining. Still replacing some signage around town. They're going to be doing some mowing with a boom arm mower. And then working on, they're working on getting a dedicated trailer for cones and barricades. So like if an event or something pops up, all the departments will have access to that. Police department will have access to that. So if something pops up, they can just pull in, grab that trailer and then use it to cone it off or barricade it off or anything that needs to be done. And then parks and recreation. We, as I told you last time, I think we were working on getting some cores drilled for the tennis court. So the morning of, they realized that tennis courts probably have fencing around them and their coring machine is truck mounted. So we had to cancel that. Now they've found an alternative way to get the cores. So we're supposed to get that done next week. So hopefully, we'll have more information on that soon. And then park, I see that the guys were moving trees in the back. They brought some equipment in, so I think that's about to start again. So we'll get that area cordoned off, caution tape to have that ready. I've spoken to the playground equipment manufacturer installer. They're supposed to be getting me an update on the punch list items I gave them and a final inspection on that. So we did get dirt moved out, fresh dirt hauled in and we'll get that seeded and cleaned up. Before long, we'll be starting on the application for the toddler version of the playground equipment. I think that's, I think that covers it.
All right, any questions for Travis?
Yeah, I have a question. Is there any way, my brain's unemployed back there on the, at the baseball dimes. Is there any way that we could put some gravel back there around the benches and stuff? There was mud holes, I mean, where the kids were running through there. Hit that, boom, they're down. Slipping and falling, then they're covered in mud. And somebody, I saw two little kids do it the other night. And I just wondered if there was a possibility that we could, because it's so flat back there. I just wondered if we could put some gravel back there to kind of help that situation out.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you Travis. All right, so we're moving along. On page two of your packet is an ordinance for the fire code. And Councilmember Campbell, can you read this by title?
In ordinance adopting the fire code for the village of Georgetown, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
All right, and this would be our second reading of the fire code. And again, this is something that probably should have been done a while ago. But Joey was working on cleaning up some things and realized that we didn't have this in place. And Joe and him took a look at it, just similar to what the police department does. And so basically, the basic code, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so do you guys have any questions on this? If not, I would entertain a motion to put this into action.
Make the motion to adopt the ordinance.
Councilmember Baki has made the motion. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded by Councilmember Barnhart. Tara, roll call. Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Baki?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. On page four, you'll see another ordinance for the property maintenance code. Councilmember Campbell, can you read this by title?
Do we have a number for?
Ordinance 1396. Oh, I apologize.
1396.
1396, you are correct. And then that was on page four.
In ordinance adopting a property maintenance code for the village of Georgetown, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
All right, thank you. And this would be our second reading. And I'm assuming everybody took a look at the property maintenance code and worked through Travis?
Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just, I have been really busy and I've got to look at some of it. But for lack of time, I've got to sit down and get ahold of Travis to talk to him about it. Now, I know that's not your guys' fault, but I am busy as can be and there's a lot here that we're putting on people in the community by jumping on this. I'd love if we could set this packet a little bit further and maybe have some discussion about it.
Do others feel the same way or?
Yeah, I agree. There's a couple of things that I haven't had a chance to really dig into either. There's a few things that I wanted to talk to Travis and possibly Mike about. I, not this Mike, my clear. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to dig into a little bit more, if you guys don't care.
So then we would just not?
No, motion to table it to a set date. I want to do like one meeting, two meetings.
I'd be, I'd love to have two meetings because like I said, there's a lot here.
It's a thick, it's a thick pack.
And it's not a thick packet if you have nothing to do.
But it's a thick packet if you have a lot on your plate.
Could we initially try for one meeting, like in between one meeting to review it? For when you say two meetings, are you saying two months or just?
No, two meetings would be one month.
Okay. I just worry, there's a lot of cleanup that needs to happen around this town. And it's summertime and that's what concerns me. Because I'd like to really get this in place. But I mean, I'm definitely willing to wait and let you guys read it. That's definitely important. I'm just seeing if we could speed that timeframe up a little bit. You guys have ultimately decided.
With this, there's a lot that we're putting on the PT that we represent. And I just feel like it's the only right thing to do.
Well, you guys decide. It's your decision. What date do you want to?
July 10th?
Yeah.
Someone needs to make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion and move that decision until July 10th.
I second.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Mays with Councilmember Ring providing the second. Tara, roll call. Councilmember Baki?
Uh, yes, anyone?
Councilmember Baki?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So at our July 10th meeting, we'll have it on the agenda. And in the?
We'll discuss it in the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, we could discuss it.
That would be great for discussion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Discussion, yeah.
Because we could probably draft some things out that possibly in that next meeting, they come to a full agreement.
Good idea. In the interim though, if you have questions, make sure you address those with Travis. Any concerns, make sure you bring them to Travis because I know they're working closely on that too. All right, page 74, a resolution. If Councilmember Campbell can read that by title, please.
Let me, let me find it.
You're fine, take your time.
Resolution adopting a special events policy for the village of Georgetown, Ohio.
All right, and Travis, this is the policy that you were talking about last month, I believe. Maybe the, our last meeting, I believe, regarding having a policy in place when someone wants to put an event on in town.
Yeah, it's really just a guide and an application. No fee or anything, but it did, you know, we did use it, like I said last time, for trial basis. And it worked well for that. So I think it just gives a clear understanding of what we need to be able to allow this kind of thing. And like I say, we're not trying to make money off of it. It just, I think it helps the person applying as much as it helps us.
So one question I have is, this is, this would be for whether it's closing down the courthouse area or the park or anything, correct? So this is village-wide, right?
Yeah, village-wide. And also, even if somebody wanted to have a block party, you know, it would work for that too.
Perfect. Any additional questions?
Oh yeah, I guess I'm gonna hit on that real quick. So you're saying, for example, the houses behind the old hospitals, if they wanted to close down streets? I mean, that would apply for you.
Yeah, they could fill this out. There's a form on there so that they notify everybody on the street so that they're aware. And they sign off on that and then we approve it and then we provide the barricades.
Perfect.
What if somebody doesn't sign off?
We would have to deal with that. I don't know that it says in there if it has to be unanimously approved, but it's just that they've been made aware of that.
Well, I mean, you know, everybody don't always get along with somebody across the street. I don't want him having something.
Absolutely.
It's more just about notification.
Right, right.
All right, if there's no additional discussion or questions, we would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, and I'll?
Councilmember Campbell has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Baki providing the second. Tara, roll call. Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Baki?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
All right, motion passes and that is resolution number?
1408.
1408. Okay, thank you. And then on page 102, you'll see another resolution for a resurfacing project. And again, Councilmember Campbell, if you could read that by title?
Sure. A resolution accepting a bid of Fillmore Construction LLC for the resurfacing and paving associated with the 2025 paving program and authorizing the village administrator to execute an agreement for the work to be performed.
All right, and Travis, if you could?
So this is the 2025 paving bid. We did have three bids. So as you see up there, we always bid out more than what our estimated total for the year is so that we can pick and choose, that gives us the best ability to maximize the funds that we have. The lowest bid came in was Brown County Construction. Fillmore was a bit higher. If we're only going down to the Lakeview Acres, we're a street, we're not doing either section of north. So you see, Brown County Construction came in at $299, $999. Fillmore came in at $315. I'm proposing, it's up to council, but I think the best bid would be Fillmore this year because of the problems we just had with Brown County Construction and the lack of communication, trying to pave that residential street in the evening. I know that caused a lot of activation around the village. So you know, it's up to council if you believe that, but that would be.
It's my recommendation. Is Fillmore local?
They are, they do a lot of local projects. They're out of Highland County.
Only reason why I'd like the ideal of, I just like local. That's all I'd like to mention.
I will say, I did not like what Brown County Construction did and the ruckus they caused last month. I had to personally deal with it and it was ridiculous. And they were warned multiple times.
Was there a holdup? Because I mean, like every day I go to the gym in the morning, I deal with it on the blacktop out here. But I think that's everywhere there's a backup when these guys are working, so.
It wasn't the backup, it's the fact that they closed down the street and didn't let people go to their homes that night after they were coming home from work.
I know that there were some grumbling about Elm Street and Ohio Street, but I think they managed that okay. I think the big issue was a dead end residential street, paving it at night. You know, and they told us they were only going to Millitt and then pave it the next morning when everybody would be at work.
Is that something that we should look at in the future to make sure that if we have any situations like that, that we make sure in the contract, we don't allow that back?
I mean, you can't spell everything out in the contract. We were having communication with them. They told us one thing and did something else, so yeah.
Well, just from personal experience, they're, I'm not impressed with the quality of their tapers. I don't like their? You deal with that, I don't. They put risers on too soon. I mean, I think clearly, in my opinion, Fillmore would definitely be the way to go. It's not a huge difference in money, that's for sure. If it's more convenient, it's what it is. I just like local, is all I'm saying.
A headache that they caused last, and I agree with the mayor because that was, I mean, that was a lot of residents that had a lot of problems with that. So I don't know that we turn around and give them another contract after dealing with that.
No, they had people driving through yards back there. You had one family that missed a practice because they weren't allowed to leave. Like just silly stuff that should not have been happening.
Too much Facebook fodder.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can say, I've had a lot of experience with Fillmore and they've, they've always done great work in the past. And they're the ones that are doing the walkpath wiring for us too.
All right, if there are no additional questions, we could entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for Fillmore. I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Campbell with Councilmember Mays providing the second.
Just to, that's the bid at $315,043. It's not the total package because their total package is $446. So just, I want to clarify that that's included. And that's what it says on the legislation.
Perfect, thank you. So we've got Councilmember Campbell making the motion, Councilmember Mays providing the second. Tara, if you could, roll call. Councilmember Barnhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Baki?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
All right, motion passes and that's resolution number?
1409.
1409. And thank you, guys. All right, so we will move along on our agenda. Agenda on page 104, you will see the fiscal report. Take a look at that. If there are any questions, we will certainly entertain those.
We do have a resolution to add.
Let me back up for a second. There is one piece of, or piece of, what am I trying to say? There's a resolution in front of you that wasn't attached to the packet that we are adding. So first and foremost, Kelly, can you read this by title?
Resolution setting forth services that will be provided by the village of Georgetown to owners and residents of real estate property located in Pleasant Township, Round Town. Such area is annexed to the village of Georgetown and stating the proximate date by which such services will be available if annexed.
Travis?
So this is the annexation of the remainder of the Southern Hill CTC. This is something that we've been working with, the school board and the administration there to get this done. They've asked that, did it take effect September 1st for their new fiscal cycle? So that's, that's what we're working on doing. This is one of the final pieces of the puzzle.
Questions?
What is that area that, I'm not sure I know where that area is. At the old school area?
So they had already annexed the administrative building next to it. But the plan was to annex the rest of that property, including the school. And that just kind of took place. So this is 25, 25.965 acres.
Is there anything out there that, once we annex that, that we'll have to immediately dive in and fix? Or is it, have we looked at anything or is it pretty?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything. I mean, we're not going to be taking over utilities. You know, that's something that we could negotiate in the future, but this doesn't require that or necessitate that, so.
All right, any additional questions?
I would just add, this is required by statute that we pass this. And this will come back to you for eventually after the Commissioners Act, you'll have to actually accept the property. So you still have one more opportunity to review it if any questions come up.
What we gained by annexing that in there?
So it just fills in, you know, the village. And there will be, or income tax involved. You know, it's something that we service now with our police and this will just allow us to do that. You know, eventually, there may be a school resource officer that's put there. That's not something that we're looking at right now, but this will allow that.
All right. If there are no additional questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Ring has made a motion to accept the annexation. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded by Brooklyn. Tara, roll call. Councilmember Baki?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnhart?
Yes.
All right, motion passes and that's resolution number 1410. All right, thank you. Okay, moving along. On page 104, you will see the fiscal report. Take a look at that. If there are any questions, we will certainly entertain those. And then? On page 105, you will see the bank balances. And then pages 106 to 109, those are your payment listings. Why do we have so many this month? That's my question. Could we not have?
Well, there were, I think, just boy grid managed last month. There's a lot that got carried over since the last week. Well, we had an extra week, 20 weeks.
Yeah, it looks like it goes into part of June as well. All right. Are no questions? We will move along to your zoning report. If you guys have a question after the fact, you're welcome to reach out to Greg or Travis. So page 148 is your zoning report. All right, any questions on any of that? If not, we will move along to roundtable. And I will start to my right with Councilmember Mays.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Ring?
There was something on my mind. I can't remember what it was, so it may come to me.
If it comes to you, just let us know. Councilmember Baki?
Nothing to see there.
Councilmember Barnhart?
Uh, well, I'm moving out of the village this month. So unfortunately, I cannot stay on council and be out of the village the same as being. So I have to put in my resignation as of today. So I'm sorry. So I was trying to fulfill, you know, until December, but I can't help the circumstances. So unfortunately, I'll be leaving.
So is that effective this meeting?
Yes.
Effective today? So this will be your last meeting?
Yes.
All right. Well, we hate to see you go. You've been a great asset to this council and we appreciate what you've done for us. But completely understand, if you're moving and changing your residence, then.
Yeah, I'm moving to Clark County or, you know, I would try to just squeeze it in like at a different time, but I just can't.
All right. All right, well, we appreciate what you've done for this council. Thank you. All right, Councilmember Campbell?
Just one thing. Tony brought it up a couple of meetings ago. Were we able to get a section of that fence taken down through the skateboard?
So yeah, we've got the quote and we're getting that done. So we're gonna, we're gonna repair that and put a gate on the corner and try that and see how it works. If not, if that didn't work, we'll just take it out.
Um, that's all I have and thanks for quitting and good luck.
Oh my gosh. All right, before we move along to other items, I do have something here to read. I know Miranda is not with us tonight, but she wanted me to read this on her behalf. It says, Dear members of village council, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from my position as council member for the village of Georgetown effective June 12th, 2025. I thank you for allowing me to serve as a member of council and thank you for all that you do for the village of Georgetown. Thank you once again for the opportunity and support you have provided. Signed, Miranda Low Hanselman. So unfortunately, I did speak with Miranda this week and it sounds like there's been a lot of extra things going on and this is one too many things for her right now and kind of rebalancing. And she really enjoyed her time on council, but unfortunately, she has to resign. So like Brooklyn, I believe that Miranda has been an asset to this council and certainly has provided great support for myself and this team as well. And we certainly are going to miss her too as well, so. So with that said, I think it's appropriate as a council that we make a motion to accept both resignations and formally put that in the meeting minutes. So if somebody would provide a motion, I would appreciate that.
I'll make a motion to accept both.
I'll second.
Thanks, Andy.
I had it in a caring way, just it's working a way.
Councilmember Campbell has made the motion to accept both resignations with Councilmember Baki providing the second. Tara, roll call.
Yes, she's talking.
Okay, yes. Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnhart?
Yes.
Councilmember Baki?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yeah.
All right, motion passes. Okay, let's see, we are at the point. Travis, you have a report for us?
I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, solicitor?
Yeah, I have something briefly. First, I want to thank Brooklyn. I really enjoyed working with you in the search for a new administrator. I think you were very helpful with that. I looked you for guidance and she didn't like them, I knew they was going nowhere. You're very lucky that she liked you. No, I did. I really enjoyed working with you.
Thanks.
Number two, I just wanted to provide a quick update to put all of your attention. If you haven't been noticing, there's been a lot going on in Columbus over the last week. And if you're not aware, the Ohio Senate just passed its version of the budget. The Ohio House previously did and it's going to reconciliation. I would encourage all of you to take a look at some of the provisions of that budget as it will have significant impacts on the village. I don't know what the final reconciliation bill will look like, but just in my notes, it is going to significantly affect property tax rates, our ability to annex property, which is significant for Georgetown. We've engaged in numerous annexations. In the future, it's possible that we will need permission from the county commissioners in order to annex land. And as a home role village, I find that offensive, that we should be able to annex if we want to and follow the statutory procedure if that's what, you know, we want to do. Additionally, it affects our ability to conduct eminent domain power. And it also, in its current form, allows for the county commissioners to have to approve our levies. So these are things that could significantly impact our home role power if they remain in the form they are right now. Obviously, there's some other things in the bill that I didn't talk about, which, you know, don't relate to village power. But I think it's something you should look at and definitely pay attention to. It's my understanding that at the moment, those will likely all be in the final version. And I think you should just take a look at it and, you know, get informed.
What's that house bill? I don't, I can email you.
Yeah, we can circulate it. Yeah, I mean, there are pros and cons all the time, but I, you know, obviously, when it affects village power, it's something that I think you should all take a look at. All of my communities are definitely talking about it. But as a charter community particularly, we enjoy certain power for home role and this definitely could potentially, if not challenged, affect that.
Yeah, and there are things outside of that bill that's going, that are going on as well in Columbus right now. House Bill 335 has been introduced and inside village, so that would take roughly $80,000 away from. House Bill 335 has been introduced to end inside village, so that would take roughly $80,000 away from the police department budget. They've included the language to eliminate replacement levies in the, in the budget bill. And then Adam Byrd is the one who sponsored the bill to give the commissioners power to stop an annexation if they don't believe that it serves the general benefit of the county. Now, as long as there's an added service that the village provides, they can't vote against it, correct?
That's correct. And I forgot that Senator Byrd was, or Representative Byrd is the one that sponsored that. So I think it's just important that you take a look at those and realize that it definitely could impact things that we do. We're, we're one of the few communities in this area that do engage in annexations because you offer municipal power, municipal water and municipal sewer, so.
And you said that has passed or?
It has passed, but it's headed to what's called reconciliation, meaning there's a house version and a senate version and they'll be merged. And once they're merged, there'll be a final vote. That could be as soon as July, I think. So it's definitely worth educating yourself and reading to find a little bit about it. And Travis will circulate some information. We've all been receiving a lot of some information.
Yeah, last week was.
It was wild.
A lot of information came out. And then on the federal side, they've added language to get rid of HUD, which, you know, I'm not opposed to necessarily getting rid of HUD, but that funds, currently CDBG grants go through HUD. So that would eliminate a lot of funding that small villages and townships depend on. I know CDBG is used in Brown County, a lot for rolling stock, for ambulance service, that type of thing. So we'll have to keep an eye on that, see if that is stripped. So hopefully there'll be another funding option that will replace that outside of HUD, but you know, that can face a ton of.
All right, anything else?
That's all. I remember.
Yeah.
I had a couple elderly people talk that they could not pull out here to park to pay their utility bills because of the police parking parked there. There were, it says for customers and their police cars are parked there, so. And they didn't, they couldn't walk across the street because they have walkers and stuff, so they just had to go by the门.
Okay, I'll bet tries of something. All right, the only other thing that comes to my mind is we need to decide how we're going to fill these positions if we're going to do it like we've done in the past. We don't necessarily have legislation that tells us how we have to fill it. But what I can tell you is that we've been pretty consistent with making the notice that there is a vacant position. And in the past, we have accepted letters of intent or resumes to be dropped off to either you guys or to the village itself and then doing an interview session. So does that sound like something you want to keep doing or do you want to do it a different way this time?
I'm going to go to Greg.
Oh, because in the past, we just haven't submitted to the village office and then done form though.
Yes.
I'm going to do that as soon as the next meeting, right?
Right.
We put it out tomorrow.
Yeah, so basically, right now, we're saying that there are two open positions that we do need to fill. So next meeting would be June 26th. It would be our intent to fill those positions, assuming there is the desire to appoint people to those positions at the June 26th meeting. So what that would mean is that if someone is interested, they could drop a letter of interest off to any council member, to the mayor or directly to the village office and that will be sent out prior to the meeting to all of us to review. And then if they could be present at the next meeting, we would do an open session interview with all candidates and possibly make a decision to appoint those positions.
Do we want to set, I think in the last one, we had like a date certain that they had to have it in their letter of interest?
Yes.
So we have enough time to maybe take a look at them?
Yes, so I would say that meeting is on June 26th. I would ask that all letters be submitted by June 24th, which is the Tuesday before the next council meeting. So letters need to be submitted by June 24th. Again, it can be just a letter of interest. Here's what I bring to the council, or it could be a resume. Either will be perfectly fine. And we would ask that those would be submitted prior to June 24th or by June 24th at 4:00 PM. And then again, if those people could be present for the June 26th meeting, which begins at 6:00 PM. During that meeting, we will do open session interviews and then possibly make a decision that night. If for some reason somebody cannot be at that meeting, please reach out to Travis, the village administrator, and he will let us know and we'll make other arrangements if we have to. All right, does that sound good? All right, thank you guys. All right, so back to the agenda. Again, the next meeting is June 26th at 6:00 PM. Is there anything additional that needs to come before this council? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Baki has made the motion with Councilmember Barnhart providing the second. All those in favor, state so by saying aye. Any opposed?